Traditional neighborhood development. Photos here show the subject property being a clear vacant lot. And the property fronts on East Montague Avenue, uh, it's own B one, uh, the other properties fronting on East Montague. So B one and B two, most are cleared lots or are occupied by single family houses and vacant commercial buildings. Uh, the intent of B one zoning is to, is to encourage neighborhood scale, commercial nodes and corridors that are compatible with traditional neighborhood residential. R two zoning would not be out of character with the existing zoning of the neighborhood. A portion of the property that is currently selling to R one located to the rear parcel would complement the existing B one zoning on the front. Given the traditional neighborhood development designation, uh, given that the traditional neighborhood development designation supports multifamily and appropriately scaled commercial uses. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed zoning of a portion of the property from R one, single family residential to R two, multifamily residential.
Alright, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have a question. Um, do they have a plan if they, they get approved for the R, uh, the R two, they already have a plan in place on the size of the dwelling they're gonna build there?
So, when we're considering these zoning changes, we are not supposed to consider the project. There is a project that has been discussed, they have discussed town halls, but that is not necessarily what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss whether or not the zoning of the property, the proposed zoning, is appropriate in this location.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Ford Smith of Charleston Ford Development.
Want to say anything on the applicant?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, appreciate everybody coming out, the whole community. Uh, we'd love to see it, you know, what we're trying to do is rezone from R one to R two. You know, as they said, um, our goal is to build townhomes. We've heard a lot of people talking about apartment. We've heard a lot of people talking about, um, you know, big apartment buildings. Just want to reiterate that our goal is to do townhomes. Um, as the zoning is in the front, we're gonna do office for retail in the B one, and then townhomes in the back. The goal of the retail building, office building, blocking the townhomes. Um, I know there's a lot of concern about rental property. We do not plan to have these as rental properties. Properties that would be for sale that anybody could buy. Um, we do think it is a good fit for the area with a comprehensive plan. And, you know, we wish to work with the community to develop a product that everybody's happy with. You know, we're open to a- all feedback and, um, you know, I even hit the streets myself on Saturday, I saw some of the flyers you're passing out. I was out on Saturday in the rain, you know, as the developer, trying to get the correct information out, um, on what we are trying to do there. After hearing about the apartment complex. Um, we're not a big hedge fund, we're a local group, local guys, our office is right on the crossroad. You know, I'm born and raised here in Charleston. Uh, by no means do we want to push anybody out. Uh, we're just trying to do something that would be, you know, rolling with progress, but also respecting the community. And again, we're open to any and all feedback, our goal is just to create more housing, especially with Roper coming in, there's gonna be demand for nurses, doctors, you know, tons of more people coming in, so there is gonna be a need for housing. Um, I do think having townhomes in this condensed area will create, you know, a good amount of density, more homes, while also keeping it in a confined space. Um, you know, I know we're not considering the plans, but we do, you know, um, want to have a buffer around the property, a large fence. To again, you know, make it aesthetically pleasing, and we're just open to any and all feedback, and appreciate you guys coming out. Happy to answer any questions staff has.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Is this your first opportunity to address, uh, members of the community, civic organization? So you haven't spoken to, like, a civic organization?
Spoken to a small group of Liberty Hill, um, and they, you know, we were hoping we would set up a meeting with the larger community. Other than that, as soon as we heard about the, uh, apartment rumor going around, we just hit the streets right before the meeting to try to get that information out there. Um, you know, we do want to have further meetings, I hope we could come together to get a product that everybody likes. You know, the concerns that I'm hearing is rent rentals, you know, I've heard that several times. They're not gonna be rentals, I know they would like to keep the aesthetic the same, you know, as what's in the neighborhood, which I completely understand. I will say that one-story, you know, townhomes, typically they are two-story, a lot of the homes in Liberty Hill are one-story. But, you know, this is the first time speaking to the community outside of, you know, the flyers and speaking to a small group of, um, you know, Liberty Hill members.
Any other commissioners have questions for the applicants? Again, this is a public hearing, so, uh, we will begin calling names of individuals who have signed up to speak. Uh, remember, as we go through the list, i- if you haven't had a chance to sign up but still want to speak towards the, uh, towards the end, we'll let you know when you can do that. The first name that I have on the list is Winfred Wright. What's the name?
It's Winfred Wright.
Winfred Wright?
Yes, um, forty-nine sixty-four Gilbert Avenue. Um, me and my wife too, Sa- uh, Saturday in the rain playing the flyers. We are against it because, uh, Liberty Hill is a historical, for the city of North Charleston, Liberty Hill was a hundred and fifty-four years old. This enhanced the city of North Charleston. The fact that we were a loser and possible, possibly lose part that we may came a historical zoning, yeah, zoning, history zoning, that, uh, what he's asking for will probably knock us out. So we asked that this, this committee, keep it as, as it is. And the fact that, uh, taxes will go up, which is gonna go up regardless he get it or not, but the idea, we want that historical part. And so I stand before you guys and ask you to stay zoning as it is. If anybody got any questions? Oh, awesome, can I, one second. And ask those who from Liberty Hill, um, stand with me, please, stand up, we're R two. So if we get, see who's, these, these are Liberty Hilleys. So we all come as, together as a group against this.
Uh, the next person I have on the list is Sam Hart.
My name is Sam Hart. I live at forty-seven eighty-nine Hassel Avenue in Liberty Hill. You can see by the number of people here that we have a great interest in denying your denial of this rezoning. There's an epidemic that is going on by developers who do not live in the city or the state of South Carolina, but have connection with the developers who do live in the city or the state of South Carolina. The only thing that I can say is that the developers are interested in mostly one thing, they said they're interested in grooming the community, but they are interested in the almighty dollar. After the development and they leave your community, you are left to grapple with the problems that occur. Development, increase in tactics for the elder, 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 um, excuse me, for the elders and the property owners. And I ask you to deny this request for rezoning. Thank you.
Yvette Wilson?
My name is Yvette Wilson, and I am a descendant of, from forty-nine sixty Gainer Avenue, the granddaughter of Caleb and Tomasina Gillett. I'm here tonight, um, to ask that you deny this request that's presented before you. I say that growing up or coming back to Liberty Hill, seeing the changes that have happened over time due to development. I remember walking the streets of Liberty Hill and seeing friends and family, because if you're from Liberty Hill, every other person was related to you. And so we had that common, um, experience on Liberty Hill. And lately, we're seeing something different, or I'm seeing something different. Every time I come home, there's some little pocket development that is told to me that this is a person that's just living here and they're enjoying the beauty of North Charleston. My concern is, what happened to our community? Why were their values not put before the, um, investors who come in seeking profit? These families are here, when you bring on all of this new development, how is the schools impacted? How is the taxes impacted? And all of these things do not lead to a stronger community. And we had that, right Liberty Hill? We had that, we were strong, we were bound. And because of past practices, our community is fragmented. Because you brought families amongst us that were not a part of us, and then you didn't do your best to, you know, help them adjust to the way we live, right? Everybody looked after everybody. We don't see that now, and we're just afraid that another project coming in, promising the world, but giving us the same results. We're asking that you deny this and leave, and, and no offense here, leave our community alone. Let us grow and let us maintain our historic value and our families.
Next person I have on the list is, uh, Carrie Gambrell.
Yeah, my name is Carrie Gambrell. I'm a homeowner on Liberty Hill. I'm reasonably on Liberty Hill all my life. I'm standing here, uh, actually to deny this because I'm with making Liberty Hill an historical neighborhood. A lot of reason is that one, my biggest reason is that in the morning time, when I get ready to go to work, I can't even get on Montague Avenue due to the traffic congestion. On Montague Avenue, coming down from Sanders, Ezekiel Independent Hospital, Abraham, cannot get out to go to work. Can't get in, come back home after work. So I'm here standing on, on behalf of making it an historical neighborhood, not allowing the development to come in there to change this due to that impact of traffic that we already have. So if I look at it five years from now, I'm gonna see that I might need one of these in spaceship that I just can live up and drive up Liberty Hill, because I won't be able to get out of Liberty Hill.
Patricia Gambrell.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Latricia Gambrell. I'm that man's wife. We live at four, we live at four seven oh four Mint Avenue. I'm asking that the development not take place for several reasons. One, it's not gonna be affordable. My husband and I was privileged enough to get a brand-new home that we can afford to pay the mortgage on. We're not struggling, we don't live from paycheck to paycheck. If you're gonna put housing in Liberty Hill, give another family a chance to have the same opportunity that we've been given. Second reason, it is historical. If you go across Mitson and Liberty Hill, you don't see apartment complexes, you don't see a townhouse. Look straight down there. Those folks have a community, it's a neighborhood, and just like the other people said, we are a family. I help my neighbor anytime she needs it. My neighbors come to me and help me anytime I need it. Bringing a developing company ahead, no disrespect, sir, but it has to be affordable. It cannot be two thousand dollars a month. Oh, I'm sorry, when you're living off of fifteen dollars an hour, who can pay that kind of rent or mortgage? If you wanna bring houses here, oh, I'm sorry, make it, I mean, I'm talking to the door, make it a house. Give someone a chance to live affordably, who's from here, like my husband, to have an opportunity to build and become a, keep a family. Go to their churches. We walk the church on Sundays, it's only a block away. Keep it that way, it's quiet. There's no place I can sit on my porch at three o'clock in the morning and thank God. No place, I can come out on my porch and there's no noise other than the traffic. There's no crime. If you bring others in here, you gotta babysit their families too. And that's when you have crime, mishap, and corruption. So please, deny the building of the condos or townhouses and let Liberty Hill stay the way it is.
Craig Mitchell?
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentlemen, uh, I've come to you to ask that you deny this request for, uh, building these.
If you could state your name and your address.
My name is Craig F. Mitchell. I am the, uh, I'm the president of the Liberty Hill Redevelopment Group. And I live at eighty-eight zero six Lannister Drive, and that is in North Charleston. Yes, uh, but I come to you today asking that you deny, uh, this request to build these, uh, townhouses in Liberty Hill. But I gave you, uh, the first sheet with that blue house, that's a sheet that respectively, a builder came and he asked us what we thought. He has the leadership of the community, what we thought of them building these type houses in the community. These type houses are the, the, uh, what's in the community right now. That's aesthetically pleasing to the community, it won't change the landscape of the community at all. The, uh, the, 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 the one, this one, this is of Days Hill. These are the, developers came into Days Hill, and what they did, they built seventeen of these buildings and didn't include the community at all. So, and this is, this is what we are trying to stave off. The developers came into the community over the weekend when it was raining, and they said that they had heard what we said. All they had to do is call me, my number didn't change. But they came in the rain and they started saying what we did, what, 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 what they, what they thought we were saying. We knew it was coming, but we meet with the community once a month, every month. Community is well-informed as to what we're doing, and the development in Liberty Hill, it belongs to me as a redevelopment of Liberty Hill. And no developer came and talked to me but this other one. And what I'm asking is that we consider the one hundred and fifty-four rich history of Liberty Hill. It's been of single-family homes for nearly a hundred, uh, hundred and fifty-four years, and we want to keep that. Because all over this nation, we look at communities like Liberty Hill, and they've changed, the landscape has changed. People go to communities that used to be theirs, but no longer theirs. We want to keep what we have, we want to build upon it, we need capital, and we will get it, and we're working on it. We need a facelift for the community, and we're doing it. But we don't need someone to come in and tell us what it is that we need in our community. It's a nu- it's time, it's timeout for that, we've done it too long. So we're asking you all to please know on this, and any developer that comes in, please contact the leadership of the community, and we'll talk to you. Thank you.
Michelle White?
I am Michelle Gather's White of forty-seven sixty-one Hassel. And our property actually backs up to, a portion of our property actually backs up to the proposed property that's, um, to be or asked to be zoned R two. I ask that and implore each of you to vote no on that project. As the ones that came before me, we, uh, stand together and saying no to overdevelopment. I am all for progress, I am all for improving things that, uh, need improving, but creating a congested, uh, neighborhood, I am not for. I see the words traditional, uh, neighborhood development, and what my idea of traditional neighborhood development is, not overcrowding. And right now, we are on the cusp of that, if we allow more, uh, R two building in our neighborhood. We already have it across Montague, on the other side, on Bonds Avenue, Lester, and I believe Luela, there's already R two building. So, or the, at least the zoning. So I believe that we have enough, and that we need to continue in the framework of Liberty Hill that it's had, as they said, in this history and the tradition. If you want to call that tradition, let's be the tradition of the, um, saving our neighborhood. It's saving the fiber of our neighborhood, how we see it. Let's not change that, because we do have individuals like myself, third generation, my grandfather, um, bu- built that land, my parents are here, O.C. and Ernest gathers, that have been there the entire, what, sixty years of their marriage, sixty-something years of their marriage, and here I am back. I lived in Atlanta, came back, here I am, back on Liberty Hill, it's a tradition. I'm using your words. Let's keep it a tradition, let's keep it single-family homes, and promote that. Take the empty lots, let's put family homes on them, as the one young lady, I don't know her name, said before. Let's keep that tradition. Let's not move forward with overdevelopment in our neighborhood for the congestion purposes on Montague. Of course, I deal with it as well, coming out of Hassel, and all of the things that, that factor in when you're trying to crowd people in. I know they look at that as good development, it is not. Because after it's sold, we have no control over what the owners do with it. It will create the, uh, Airbnbs and the rentals after they purchase it. We have no control over who buys it. So transient people coming in and out, they don't add value to a neighborhood because they have no roots there. So let the people who have the roots have a say in what happens going forward. We ask you to vote no.
Hallary Young?
Hallary Harper Young, forty-seven sixty-three Alexandria Drive, North Charleston. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association. Okay, this is what, I think you all already have it, and you have it up there. That's the footprint of Liberty Hill already, that the city of North Charleston approved, and they proved it for a reason. Because they're wanting to keep a certain density in Liberty Hill. So we're here tonight to say no to R two zoning in our neighborhood. Liberty Hill is a small, and it's small, and our streets, parking and drainage systems can't handle high-density housing. When you add more people than the area can support, it hurts the quality of life for everyone who lives here. Years ago, when the city did the B one, B two, B one can accommodate anything. So already, there's actually property that can actually develop as apartments. We already have R two that can be developed as apartments. Let's leave that there and don't add two. We've seen developers come in with drawings that don't match the reality, buildings that are too large, limited parking, that doesn't fit, and plans that would change the look and feel of our community. It feels like they don't respect the people who built and care for Liberty Hill centuries, a century and a half. We're not against growth. We're here to support single-family homes for working families, making about eight thousand dollars, which is the mean for the city of North Charleston. Homes may be about two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, what we can afford, we can buy, stay, and raise our children there. So we ask for that Charleston Affordable Development Group not overbill or overprice the units to recoup their investment. We ask them to work with our Neighborhood Association, our neighborhood, to plan housing that fits our needs, not be against our needs. So tonight, we ask that you stand with Liberty Hill. You know, as to protect our history, protect our people, and protect our future. No to R two zoning in Liberty Hill. Thank you.
Courtney Waters?
Good evening. Um, my name is Courtney Waters, I live at twelve oh four Tice Lane. And, uh, that is not an address on Liberty Hill, it's an address in Park Circle. But I'm here as a South Carolina State House Representative, who represents Liberty Hill and, quite frankly, almost every property that's on your list for consideration tonight. And so there's a lot happening in District one thirteen where I serve. And I won't restate what's been, what's been said, um, I, I've had a lot of conversation with community leaders, the various groups that are in Liberty Hill, and honestly, um, it's been very impressive to work in Liberty Hill, on Liberty Hill, uh, because it is my only community that is so organized and has so many folks who are, uh, sitting in roles that are very much necessary, um, and trying to align behind a common purpose and strategy. And what is deeply concerning to me, almost to the point of frustration, is that I don't believe that we have dealt in earnest with the community of Liberty Hill. I say that because I think it was April, when I sat in the city council meeting with the community members of Liberty Hill, and they asked for historic zoning overlay, and I know that wasn't the first time, because prior to that, in about December, I sat in one of their community meetings and listened to them have discussion about what they needed still to do in order to be eligible to make the ask. I sat in another meeting around January, or something, uh, somewhere around that time, when they, uh, sent out letters and, and envelopes and got a team to work off hours, um, to try to get information out to the community, to bring information in. And around June, I, I called around, uh, to some folks, and I said, "What's going on with the zoning overlay in Liberty Hill?" And I learned that it still had not happened. And my job at that point was to figure out why, and I've had a lot of really productive conversations, and what I've come away with is the city is still asking them to jump through a lot of hoops, to still, uh, get more information, collect signatures, collect letters of support. I've sent one personally, and whether the zoning overlay happens or not, uh, it is not what's up for discussion today, but I wanted to make sure that I established that Liberty Hill is in process of trying to do everything they know to do to save the value and preserve the quality and character of the current neighborhood. And piece by piece, we are taking it out of their hands. And I don't believe that that is a genuine way to work, when we say, "Wait, I'm gonna work with you on this zoning overlay," but at the same time, we are making decisions on individual parcels that will in fact impact the integrity of the community. And the other thing that I would say is, I am familiar with at least one other organization that wants to do development in Liberty Hill that is respecting, and I would ask for a little grace as a state official to just finish. And I would ask for a little grace, as a state official, to just finish my comments. Um, because I will be brief. But there is at least one organization that I know of that worked with the community to design a property, a structure, that the community did agree with. I have found Liberty Hill to actually be easy to work with, if they're listened to and worked with in earnest. And so, I ask that at this time, you deny any rezoning. And the last thing that I would say about it is, I understand that you are supposed to be discussing not the property that will be built, but the zoning. And that you do have this zoning in the community at the same already. But it is, again, not the highest, best thing we can do. To do things simply because we can. Sometimes, we have to do what is in the best interest of the people and not our profits. Thank you.
So, I don't want to butcher your name, but I have an Ashley.
Ashley Craig Shaw. My address is forty-five fifty Durant Avenue. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. Um, so I just want to say, I stand in full supportive Liberty Hill community, and I'm in strong opposition. And I stand in strong opposition to any effort to rezone the neighborhood from R-one to R-two. This issue is not abstract for me. My grandparents bought a home on Raven Avenue in the four- forties. And that very house where my mother was born and raised, and the bonds that she actually built, I've been able to cultivate on my own since making North Charleston my home for the last twenty years. Family and friends know that Liberty Hill, its community stakeholders have earned the right to be taken seriously. Through persistence, self-determination, and stewardship, Liberty Hill has stood for over a hundred and fifty years as a living record of black independence and resilience in the Low Country. And yet, although it is often cited, celebrated verbally, that Liberty Hill is an, is an historic community, the very merits of that history are being quietly eroded. This happens not only through rezoning proposals like this one, but also through slow-walking, there are groups like the Liberty Hill Improvement Council and their effort for historic overlays, measures that would formally safeguard the neighborhood's historic and cultural integrity. This is a serious moment, one that will reveal whether our city's commitment to preservation is symbolic or substantive. Rezoning this property is not progress, it is a mistake. Once R-one becomes R-two, others will follow. What begins as one minor adjustment can quickly erode the stability and identity that generations before us worked so hard to protect. If Liberty Hill is ever to obtain protections it truly deserves and is entitled to, might I add, this proposed reasoning, check, charge, or change must not move forward. This isn't about blocking development, it's about defending balance, belonging, and legacy. Just as every other historic district in Liberty Hill's radius has accomplished and rather easily. Rejecting this proposed honor honors those before and respects the living legacies of those who currently reside there. And remember if nothing else, that Liberty Hill is not just a neighborhood, it is a lineage, a beautiful living thing, having earned its autonomy. Protect Liberty Hill and deny this request, please. Thank you.
Regina Hackett.
Good afternoon. I'm Regina Hackett. I reside at two eight two-three Penobscot Drive in North Charleston. Um, I am just here tonight to ask that this request is denied, because I came out here in twenty, twenty, the end of twenty-two, the beginning of twenty-three, to ask for the very same thing. I wanted to change a piece of my property to R-two, so that I could build, um, maybe about five or six. Um, I sort of wanted, well, I do want, I, I wanted an apartment building. But I wanted it for seniors, and I wanted it for veterans. I wanted it for, uh, just folks that, um, might have needed, uh, uh, well, a place to stay like a nursing home. So, if, if, I am a seventy-year resident of Liberty Hill. So, if I've been a resident for that long, and somebody comes in that doesn't know anything about Liberty Hill and want to try to do a thing that I don't think is necessary, or that shouldn't be done for Liberty Hill. I'm trying to figure, why would you tell me no, but then you would tell somebody else yes? So, if you're telling him yes, then I'm gonna go look into it to see if it's okay for me to do it. So, I, I, I really think you need to just say no to anybody or everybody. If you're gonna say no, just say it to everybody. Not just one person. Because I was looking out for, I, I needed, uh, what's that word I'm looking for? Uh, affordable. I was looking to build affordable homes for, like I said, seniors and veterans. Some you have homeless, and this, that, and the next thing. You have some people that can't care for their family because they're working and mama's home by herself. Well, if mama can live over here in this apartment, then she's got people around her that it can also help look out for her. Because if everybody's seniors, everybody gets along, and this, that, and the next thing. But I still say, if I am a, a, a veteran resident of Liberty Hill, and you tell me no, and I think the new person should get no.
Jay Whipper. Jay Seth Whipper.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Seth Whipper, forty-eight twenty Sanders Avenue, North Charleston, right on Liberty Hill. Um, so, I, I started on Liberty Hill in nineteen forty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine, and moved around, uh, came back in eighty-six, and have been living there ever since. Um, I served as a state representative for that area of others, which is the district that was, um, Courtney took over. And so, um, here's the story. Before I got into elected office, I was a member of the Liberty Hill Improvement Council. And I can't tell you how long, uh, okay, in the eighties. In the eighties, we, we worked long through the NOICET program to propose the neighborhood plan for Liberty Hill, which made recommendations for lot sizes. It was the impetus for the R-one reading that occurred, and it's stayed for so long. And we even had designs of houses and some other things. And then, a few years later, we did a second one. I think, the time I did that, I think sometime around when the, uh, what is now the Low Country, uh, Montreuil, so when they came about, because I remember Mr. Hilton moved back. And we offered another plan that had to do with what we thought was appropriate for the lots that we had. In keeping with the R-one designations, as well as setting up some streetscapes for that part of East Montague to coincide with what was being done with NOICET and other kinds of development. So, the community, the door-to-door, next-door neighborhood people, coming to the community council meetings, and we were making these particular recommendations for what we wanted. Well, you know, things happen and stuff gets delayed. But the issue of R-one was primary to us. And we battled with our neighbors to keep R-one. I was fortunate enough to get a few things done, uh, because people had been grandfathered in. But we stayed R-one because of what happened with the public housing. It's always been R-one, and we have been working to, uh, then, as a part of that appreciation, the one hundred and fifty-four year history you hear about the community, there are serious efforts being made for that historical designation. And as well, I mean, you got a church up there that was started, congregation started just after the Civil War. In fact, I take that back, it was a year or two before the Civil War, and it's just St. Peter's Amy Church. The church itself is on the National Historical Route. Okay, so, we're, we're here to, to say, this is nothing that we're playing with, this is serious stuff. All of us have made sacrifices to maintain that R-one, because we know that it's important. And so, we are asking that you would recognize that as a part of your decision, because zoning is important. So, we have a plan for the future of the community.
Looks like Marty Bell.
Admiral Mr. Whipper, uh, let's continue with my time, we can't. So, we, we, no, Mr. Whipper, we can't.
Oh, you can't, you can't change that. Oh, it's not like your house, huh? I thought they had seven rooms.
I thought so as well, yeah, that was my fault.
Connie Shaw. Connie Shaw.
My name is Connie Shaw, I live at forty-nine forty-nine Danesville Avenue. Um, I've been in this community for about nine years. When I moved, it was, uh, two thousand and eight. I got married to somebody who's here, I'm not gonna call her name. And, um, we got divorced in two thousand and eleven. Coming along the streets, I saw a sign, uh, uh, property for sale, I bought that property. And maybe after three years, it's another sign, I bought that property. Um, since I've been a resident of Liberty Hill, I understand what the people are saying, keeping Liberty Hill a story. Um, a year ago, I sold my second property to this man over here, um, Brad Smith, Smithfold. And, uh, across the streets, across from my house, they built a two-story house. It was old, decrep- decrepitated house, and they repaired that house. And I think that what the people are doing in the community is a good thing. And I understand what the residents are saying about keeping it affordable, keeping it historical. When I sold my house, when I sold my second property, and the guy next to me, he sold his property right, uh, on the corner of Lester and Nesbit. And they built two units there. And I think it's beautiful. You drive down Nesbit, you see those, I think it's, it's lovely. And I think what the people are doing, and if you ride down different house, different streets in Liberty Hill, you would see these houses. But I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna say, nu- stand neutral, because like I say, I'm not, I'm now the resident of Liberty Hill. You understand? But I appreciate how the people are coming in and taking these old houses and putting up new houses. But like the female said, um, what I should say is that I'm for it, if they're gonna put up something affordable, so there's no rich people here in Liberty Hill. And I understand what the people are saying, they want to keep it a story. So, right now, my vote is just open. Watch the language. Well, he told me to set my ass down. Y'all didn't hear that?
All right, all right. So, I think this is Charles. Jerome Smalls.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Jerome Smalls. I live at four nine oh-two Gainer Avenue, which is in Liberty Hill. Um, I'll start off by saying, I am not in support of y'all rezoning it to R-two. Um, I bought my first property at that address that I just shared with you. I'm from North Charleston, I'm not from Liberty Hill. But I was able to afford a home that was built by someone from Liberty Hill that looks like Liberty Hill. And that's how I got my first piece of the American dream, here in the city that I was born and raised in. And my thing is, when we talk about R-two, um, the issue with that is that I left DC, where there was plenty of congestion and apartments and so forth. And all we're asking is for our little one hundred and twelve acres to actually feel like a neighborhood, just like so many other neighborhoods in the city of North Charleston. And asking for it not just to be affordable, but attainable for the next generation of folks who are from this community, from this city, who can't afford to live here. And we think about what is right, what is pur- what is purposeful as a city and as a staff that should be working for us, the people. We're asking that we keep it R-one. Um, uh, we've heard things about this being good for the region and for the development, and that might be true, but it's not good for this neighborhood. There's plenty of other spaces, um, for us to think about further development. And I ask that the planning commission be more strategic about where they actually want density and where they can allow the people who are asking for, uh, a traditional neighborhood aesthetic to remain so. Um, I also want to say that, um, we are asking to honor history and legacy. I am not from Liberty Hill, but I immediately can see its value and its beauty and its history. And that's why I'm immediately have been a part of trying to preserve Liberty Hill, even though I'm just a kid from Dorchester Road. Because it is so easy to see, and I don't understand why our team and our community has to come out in such droves every time to continuously ask the city that works for us and that is paid by us to work for us. And so, with that being said, um, this has been a, a struggle for me, because throughout our country, and Mr. Craig hit on it a little bit, black folks and black land has always been seen as dis- dispensable, as an opportunity to weather down the price point so that where capitalism can do what capitalism does and buy low and sell high. We're asking for actual investment, we're asking for actual support, we're asking for an opportunity, um, to be seen as worthy of being developed as is and for what we have a vision for, and not for what others have a vision for. Um, and I guess, the thing I'll say, I know when we talk about a, a true frail market, highest and best use is the idea. But the city is not in the business of being always about highest and best use. The city is being in the business of representing its constituents. And right now, you have a room full of your constituents asking you to vote no. Um, so, again, I hope that we don't have to continue to come up in droves to make a statement, but we will. Um, because we are a city, a community that's unified. And I ask that the developer thinks about things that are unique and, and, and novel in how they approach it. There is the Community First Land Trust that can help keep homes affordable forever. There are ways to think about single-family homes that can have density, as Liberty Hill is already separating such small lots. So, that's my time, um, and I ask that you vote no in support of the community and what we want.
Quentin Grant. Uh, Chris Collins. We're on, we're on this one right now, though.
I support the people of Liberty Hill, uh, with the school of Liberty Hill. Well, Chris Collins, twelve six Chesterfield Road, we also own property on Days Hill, uh, I mean, close to Liberty Hill, our neighbors. Our church is still with Liberty Hill. And I see a lot of people here that, uh, that own Liberty Hill that I know. And I appreciate you all coming out, and, uh, for so long. In the poor African-American communities, people put up a sign, they say, "Nobody's eating trucks parked in the community." They done this thing. Next thing you see is some other business come up, fence going up there, playground being taken down, and businesses getting, getting away. I mean, so our properties and communities historically have been exploited for years. Poor people haven't had any rights, and they couldn't afford lawyers. I mean, so, so many times, we've had our communities destroyed by businesses, you know, like, like one on Days Hill. The mountain, mountain apartments didn't even know where they're coming. Next thing you know, they're, they're being transformed. But you know nowadays, we learn how to read? We're doing a little more reading than we used to do. A little more seeing, a little more studying. And so, the community is asking no, and I'm asking no, not to put up the apartments on Liberty Hill. We don't need that, we can go elsewhere. They can, let them go to an affordable area for that. And Liberty Hill remains its old historical community, serving the people that love it, and I love it too. So, I'm asking not to put it up there, but go elsewhere to a community that's got so much land, you got land across county roads, down Dorchester Road. But, uh, you, you Liberty Hill alone, but plus, plus good church people, and that.
Did Quentin come back in, or is... All right. So, this concludes all the, the individuals that are listed to speak. Alright, so this concludes all the the individuals that are listed to speak, but you still have an opportunity. If anybody has anything to say that did not get an opportunity to sign up, you can still do so now.
Say something.
Alright, if I can get your name, please, sir.
My name is Al Townsend, forty-six seventy-seven Mint Avenue.
Say that address again for me, sir.
Forty-six seventy-seven Mint Avenue. I, I sit here and I listen to you, and I've been here a few other times. And I've watched all of you guys, and I don't know none of you guys. Y'all the one making all the decision here. And I don't know if you're living here, come here, been here, where y'all from? I don't know. But y'all here at the table, and the, the ball is in y'all's court. But you know, I sit and I say to myself, how many years that we gotta keep coming before you guys? And sort of like begging y'all. Y'all don't think black folk get tired begging y'all all the time for the same little, for the help that is ours? I mean, can we get a break? We always gotta be among the team. Can we have this? Can y'all give us this? Can we do this? I mean, really, awful parents them struggle. The history is, is what it is. We ain't making up no history. We've been in bondage. We, we've been a slave. We've been slave people. We didn't act to be slaves, but y'all did it. And now we here trying to hold on our ancestors what they struggled for, with the whooping they took. So begging y'all, can we have this? Can we have this? I mean, I born in the struggle, and it look like I'mma end up dying in the struggle. I mean, can I get a break? I mean, that's all we asking. Now, now, now here we go. Can, can they bully us and can they bully that? I mean, we don't, we not discriminate about who bullying what. But like they say, can y'all just consider taking it somewhere else? Or even if you come to the president over here and Mr. President here, and then you sit at the table, and let's see if we can work something out. But if they ain't cares, then just leave Liberty Hill alone. Can't we have something? I mean, can we have something? When I look at my house, and I look at how y'all are knocking all these houses down, they built all around us. And now y'all ain't got us locked in. Now here y'all coming, now nuts on my jaw, but here we go. Now y'all ready to dive in the muddle and take us out. Can't we get a break? We really see it. Next thing, we had a mayor live around here, back here in Century Oaks. I mean, we just being bombarded. I mean, I can't, come on, y'all. We, we tired. We tired begging and asking y'all, just stay. Y'all ain't giving us nothing. No way we asking for. We gotta beg y'all for that. So my point is this, don't take anything away from none of you guys. I don't know y'all like that. I don't know where you from. I don't know who you are. But we asking you to consider, here I go again. Consider to leave Liberty Hill the way it is. Cause like the guy who came in here and said he gonna build something, the one thing came out of his mouth, I don't know if y'all got it, but I heard what he said. Uh, we gonna build a commercial down on the bottom. We gonna put departments in the back. Then we gonna have anybody can come in Liberty Hill. What do you mean anybody? No. So again, thank you for the opportunity, but give us a break, man. Tired today.
And again, this is still a public hearing. If anybody else has any comments that did not get a chance to sign up on the sheet, now would be the time.
Forty-five fifteen Days of Lane. I like Al. I know all y'all. And I will say this, uh, if you go down Martinew early in the morning, it's hard, nearly impossible to make a left turn going out of Liberty Hill. Especially when that train tracks there and when school started. I walk past it. Everybody know I walk. I walk a lot, just for exercise. I walk past cars going through there. And one thing I noticed, these traditional neighborhoods, uh, they should all stay R one. Cause for some reason, on this side of town, it's always a recommendation for R two, but it ain't quite that. Stop at that Remount Road on the other side of town. So please, keep it traditional R one. It ain't conducive for the area itself. B one is fine on that front part, with the business front. But R two, nah, no go. Thank you.
Do we have any else? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Public floor is closed, and commissioners, we will entertain a motion. Before we initiate, can I request to ask something to staff after the motion? After the motion.
That'd be denied, at least on the.
Got a motion in the second for denial of staff's recommendation? Any discussion? I request discussion.
Uh, just to make sure, so we're talking about rezoning basically dead center in the middle of R one, moving it up to R two. The center of the community, with the only R two current districting or zoning strictly across the street. Just to make sure that's correct.
Yes.
We got a discussion. Ready to vote?
Alright, the motion on the floor is to recommend denial. Vote, um, Mr. Crawford.
Denial.
Mr. Duan.
Aye on denial.
Mr. Monty.
Aye for denial.
Sharf.
I go for denial.
And Mr. Bellamy. So that is, uh, unanimous, uh, for recommendation of denial. Clear that you understand that this is a recommendation to City Council. This is not the final decision. Uh, this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the Public Safety Committee of City Council on November twentieth. We have five thirty on that Thursday, November twentieth, here in this room. So, thank you all. We appreciate your time. Um, you're welcome to stay. Uh, but we do have other items. If you can make just a little bit of room, we would appreciate it.
This could be another time?
Right.
That was maybe on the original agenda.
Still to come back, you have to put a new, put a new sign up and start over, right?
Good evening, y'all. Welcome to the second half. Just to, uh, give you a heads up, the, uh, the item, the proposed rezoning for the twenty-one sixty-eight Gil yard lane, um, address has been withdrawn by the applicant. So if you are here for that address, it's not being discussed this evening. Anyone here for that one? That's good, okay. Alright.
Up to letter A.
Letter A?
On the agenda. This is a proposed rezoning of the property addressed at sixteen twenty-nine Sumner Avenue, Charleston County TMS four-seven-one zero-one zero-zero-zero-eight, from R one single-family residential to R two multifamily residential. Uh, the property can be seen here, highlighted in blue on Sumner Avenue. The current, uh, current land use is, uh, an existing single-family home. As you can see here, uh, the current zoning of the property is R one, surrounded by R one north, south, east and west. Subject property is designated Traditional Neighborhood Development. R two zoning would be consistent with this designation, which is applied to areas of the city to provide for and/or sustain higher-density neighborhoods with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. The principal use for this designation is mixed residential typical of urban neighborhoods, including single-family residential development on smaller lots. Attached residential structures such as duplexes and townhomes, and small-scale multifamily development. You see the Traditional Neighborhood Development highlighted in the green here for this area. Subject parcel is currently developed with a single-family home, seen here in the photo. And the subject property is part of the Charleston Farms neighborhood, which is situated along Remount Road and north of Interstate five-twenty-six. The area is developed with a mix of single-family and multifamily residential uses. Staff, uh, is recommending approval, given, uh, the support from the comprehensive plan and the residential character of the neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from R one single-family residential to R two multifamily residential. And in just a moment, the map should pop up, so we should be able to see what we're talking about. Now, we can proceed.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
I don't think. My name is Matthew. Um, this is my application. Uh, thank you guys for the approval. I would like to add that there is a single-family house. There's also a duplex at the back of that has two units. So right now on the property, there are three existing units, uh, with three separate meters and, um, so it already, it already is kind of set up for the. It's not just that single-family house, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Have you, um, contacted the, the community in regards to, uh, your ideas on what you wanna do within that area?
Uh, I have not yet done that.
Say it again.
I said I have not yet done that.
You have not, okay. This is a public hearing. Uh, it looks like we have one person signed up to speak. Um, Robert Jameson, maybe. Robert, is that Robert? Alright, this is still a public hearing. If you not, have not had a chance to sign up and do wish to speak on this item, you still have an opportunity to do so. Anyone has? Saying no, we'll close the floor and entertain a motion.
All motion for approval.
Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Alright, the motion on the floor is for approval, the rezoning from R one single-family residential to R two multifamily residential. Um, Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
Mr. Duan.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Monty.
Aye.
Mr. Sharf.
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy.
Aye.
Alright, the motion to approve carries four to one. And this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council at the next opportunity for public input at Public Safety Committee of City Council on Thursday, November twentieth, at five thirty here this afternoon.
Item on the agenda.
So, this is a proposed rezoning of properties addressed at sixteen twenty-eight and sixteen thirty-four Sumner Avenue, Charleston County TMS numbers four seven three one four zero 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 nine nine. And uh, so one hundred from R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential. Two properties highlighted here in blue, again, on Sumner. Uh. Currently zoned to R one and currently used as single family homes. See hereby, from the zoning map, existing properties are R one, surrounding properties are R one area. Subject properties are designated traditional neighborhood development. Two zoning would be consistent with this designation, which is applied to areas of the city to provide for and or sustain higher density neighborhoods with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. The principal use for this designation is mixed residential typical of urban neighborhoods, including single family residential development on smaller lots, attached residential structures such as duplexes and townhomes, and small scale multifamily development. Again, highlighted in green here, uh, for uh, neighborhood, for traditional neighborhood development. Street view here can be seen, photos of the properties. Uh, as stated previously, they are currently single family homes. Adjacent views, uh, subject properties are part of Charleston Farms neighborhood, which is situated along Remount Road and north of Interstate five twenty-six. The area is developed with a mix of single family and multifamily residential uses. All the properties to the north and east are zoned R one, they are functioning as legal non-conforming apartment complexes. Staff's recommendation is approval, given that the subject property's location in proximity to surrounding multifamily residential uses and support from the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the properties from R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Both property owners are here, I'm the applicant. Uh, may I speak?
Uh, and I'm gonna. Any commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
I'm the applicant. Alright, I'm majoring in law, I'm actually from Ross and Warren, the few. Been here my whole life. Uh, I'm representing Ray. Way back in the day, I was the benefits uh, guy for Coburg Dairy. I've known Ray for thirty-some odd years. He has lived on Sumner and Addaway Street for seventy-one years. Uh, Ray has Parkinson's disease and he called me about wanting to sell his house. Unfortunately, the house is kind of fu- functionally obsolete. It's too small. And it has uh, kind of gone through its phases to the point that it's not financially feasible to repair the property and make it a real property to subsequently maybe sell down the road. And so, I, I found a comparable sale where someone had rezoned their property from R one to R two and was able to get about two hundred thousand for the lot. At that time, Ray informed me that young Ryan Fitz over here had bought the house next door. And in a similar way, the house is kind of functionally obsolete. I went in there to look at it myself and the bedrooms were seven feet wide by ten feet long. Uh, basically, they fitted a twin bed in there and that would be it for three people living in a home, so. And that house is built at grade. Anytime it rains, the water's coming inside, no matter how many times you change out the carpet, it's gonna, it's, it's just gonna flood. And so, both these houses from their footprint and their size, based upon the size of their lot, I would say that, you know, com- comparing it to the sale that took place, and they are bounded by a church on the left, a massive apartment complex on their back property line. So multifamily on the right-hand side on Mole Lane, and I think maybe possibly some commercial in the front. You know, I, I just hope and pray that you guys would agree with us that, you know, rezoning this to multifamily and with these houses kind of being in the conti- condition they are, they're really not worth rehabbing. Um, and they're certainly not worth the money to put into them to turn around and resell. So the idea would be to put up some multifamily affordable housing there for a potential buyer. And so that's what I'm asking for on their behalf.
Could the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? We don't have anyone currently signed up to speak on this uh, property, but it is a public hearing if anyone wishes to. Seeing no movements. We will entertain a motion.
Well, the motion for the, for it to be approved is on the.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Motion on the floor is to approve the rezoning from R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential. Uh, Mr. Crawford?
Aye for who?
Mr. Duong?
Aye.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Alright, that motion is unanimously approved and again, this project will next be heard at the Public Safety Committee, City Council on November twentieth at five thirty in this room. Alright. And. Yes, sir. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. See on the agenda is a proposed rezoning of the properties addressed at fifty-five twenty-three and fifty-five twenty-five Addaway Street, Charleston County TMS numbers four seven three one four zero 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 eight one three zero eight zero from R two multifamily residential to B one limited business. The properties can be seen here. Highlighted in blue. At this intersection with, um, I'm sorry. Just on this, um, Sumner and Addaway. Currently, uh, the properties are used as uh, are cleared vacant lots. The current zoning of the properties are R two. You see that here, highlighted in the orange, adjacent to B one zoning here and R one surrounding. Subject properties are designated traditional neighborhood development. This designation is applied to areas of the city to provide for and or sustain higher density neighborhoods with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. Uh, mixed housing types that are s- uh, mixed. Sorry, I forgot about that. Mixed housing types that are where single family residential development on smaller lots, attached residential structures such as duplexes and townhomes and small scale multifamily development. Uh, as you can see by the subject photos, they're clear, cleared vacant lots. The subject properties are surrounded by R one zoning in northwest and east, across Addaway Street and B one to the south. The area is developed with a mix of residential uses and limited business zoning. Staff's recommendation, given the subject property's location in proximity to surrounding residential uses and the lack of support from the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the properties from R two multifamily residential to B one limited business.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? We don't have anyone signed up to speak on this address either, but it's a public hearing if anyone is in it, is interested. Seeing no movements, uh, we will entertain a motion. Move, we accept staff's recommendation. A second, okay. Motion in the second, any discussion? Ready for vote?
Motion on the floor is to recommend denial of the rezoning from.
It's approval? No, denial.
Denial.
I'm sorry.
The recommended motion uh, on the floor is to recommend denial uh, of the rezoning from R two to B one. Um, Mr. Crawford?
Aye for denial.
Mr. Duong?
Aye for denial.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye for denial.
And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
So that is unanimous, recommend denial. The, this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input of the Safety Committee, City Council on November twentieth, which is on Thursday here at five thirty in this room. Letter D on the agenda is a proposed rezoning of the property addressed as twenty-one fifty-six Midland Park Road, Charleston County TMS number four seven eight one six zero 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 six four from O N Neighborhood Office to B one Limited Business. And, this is the property highlighted in blue, um, Midland Park Road, close to Rivers. Current use of the property is a commercial building. See by the zoning map here, in pink, property is zoned O N Neighborhood Office and is directly adjacent to R one uses as well as other O N area. Subject property is designated as mixed use, which establishes a mixture of commercial and residential land uses located within close proximity to one another. Appropriate uses include office, retail, multifamily and light industry. You see that highlighted here in blue on the future land use map. See here in the photos, the subject property is already developed as a two-story commercial building. Adjacent properties are already developed with a mix of residential zoning and commercial zoning. Mixed use designation supports a mixture of commercial and residential land uses within close proximity. The existing neighborhood office zoning allows for business and professional offices. Staff believes the existing neighborhood office zoning is appropriate due to the parcel's location. Accordingly, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from O N Neighborhood Office to B one Limited Business.
Commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Yes. Hello. Um, my name is Sandra Teja, I'm the applicant and the owner of the building. And the reason why I'm asking for rezoning of the property is because the suite one-on-one, which is in the first floor, has been listed for two months already. And I have a lot of uh, people coming in to want to do business in the area. Um, uh, most of the fair, um, interest people are basically, um, for a retail. I have a kin- um, an adult daycare, uh, retails about three or four person interested in retails. And Mexican stores, kind of, uh, businesses. And we don't have that, and uh, a nail salon. So it's been, um, I've been struggling trying to rent it out. Uh, after being, uh, the whole being the remodel, like, uh, fifteen place of parking lot in the back, including one handicap and the ramps accordingly with the code. So we have, I, we, we did a great, like, um, remodeling in the building in the exterior and interior, and we want to provide, like, different type of business in the community. I'm the owner and I occupy the business, so I'm dealing with the community every day. The community council actually called me to be interested in what I want to do in the building. So I just wanted to know why you guys are recommending denial uh, for this type of zoning.
So.
Was that a question you can answer?
Yeah.
And that you should answer, not bring that to us.
Yeah, I would normally say this is, this is filed by her. Talk to you all as to why she believes the project is viable or the rezoning is appropriate. It wouldn't be appropriate for them to go back and forth in, in discussion as to what their positions are. Staff should be clear as to how it reached its determination or whatnot in its presentation. And she then responds with, with her reason for the request and why she thinks it's appropriate.
So.
That's my very first time ever in a meeting like this, so I apologize, this is not the correct approach of it.
It's all good. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do, what is the current uh, building, is it, is currently being used for what?
My business is, um, I run, um, a bilingual services business. I do, um, insurance, I have three business licenses in the building, like, um, uh, real estate, insurance and, um, bilingual services like taxes, translations and immigration services. Uh, we do have a barbecue shop in the, um, one of the, um, office downstairs. And it used to be a salon in the other one, however, we don't have in the code, because I, 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 I get into that code. We don't have the, um, we can't have any nail salon, for example. So I have a lady who wants to do, uh, a bar, um, a nail salon. So it's not in the code. I have three people interested in set up like a Mexican store with, um, packages for Latin America, which is a very high populated for Hispanic in that area. So I don't have that in the code. I have a person who wants to run, um, mini adult daycare for adults, because we have the ramps and we have the handicaps and it's it's a small, but it's very, pretty good located there. And we don't have that in the, in the neighborhood, so we are, I mean, it's very small, that office neighborhood for that, um, for the needs of the community. I believe, and I'm talking about getting, having these, uh, lots completely remodeled in the market, sitting for two months, having a lot of people coming, interested in getting like, um, the application, but know for the business that they are interested in, so that's.
Have any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Uh, we don't have anyone currently signed up to speak, but it is a public hearing if anyone else is interested. Floor now closed and we will entertain a motion. Floor is closed, we will entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from O N Neighborhood Office to B one Limited Business.
I'll second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
From the looks of everything, there's currently B two zoning all around it. Um, with this one being the current O N.
Yeah, it's just the, the lighting thing is R one A, which is essentially R one, but it also allows us to hold public home.
The dark red is the.
Dark red. The request was for B one, which is, you know, general business.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote?
So, the motion on the floor is to recommend approval of the request to rezone from O N Neighborhood Office to B one Limited Business. Mr. Crawford?
Nay.
Mr. Duong?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, thank you. Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Alright, so the motions who approve fails. Two, three. Two, three. And this item will also be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input. At the Public Safety Committee of City Council on November twentieth. Uh just to repeat again, the prior letter E that was on the agenda has been withdrawn by the applicant. So we are moving on to the next item, which is. This proposed rezoning, the property is addressed as eleven sixty one, eleven sixty five and eleven eighty one Wright Street Charleston County TMS numbers four seven one zero three zero zero. Zero four three, zero three eight, zero three seven. From M one light industrial to R two multifamily residential. See the properties highlighted here. In blue on Wright Street. Currently, the properties are vacant with wooded lots. See here by the zoning map, the current zoning of the properties are M is M one. Adjacent to some R one zone properties across the street and R two to the south. Subject properties are designated as traditional neighborhood development, partially within the mixed use corridor of the North Red Avenue. Uh the mixed use corridor supports a mixture of commercial and residential uses located within close proximity to one another. Traditional neighborhood development is applied to areas of the city to sustain higher density neighborhoods. With smaller lots and a mix of housing types, it provides support for attached residential structures such as duplexes. In town homes and small scale multifamily development. See here, the hatch shows the mixed use corridor of North Red. This uh does apply to a a portion of the properties. Subject properties here in the photos, you can see it on it's a wooded lot. And the properties are surrounded by R one zoning to the east and north across Wright Street, M one to the east, B one to the west and R two to the south. Uh staff's recommendation, given that the subject property's location, the proximity of other residential uses and support from the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from M one light industrial to R two multifamily residential.
Any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Uh Davis McNair. Just wanna say we believe this rezoning is a good transition from North Red to single family. We reach out to Councilman Brown as well as the Charleston Farms community uh for any initial feedback on the rezoning. Uh here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any commissioners have questions for the applicant? It's like we have one person signed up to speak on this property, uh Louis Waring?
Yeah, what I wanna know is all of a sudden now is.
Just give your address, please, confirm your address.
I live at eleven seventy seven Leary Street. That's directly behind my house. I spent what? Close to five thousand dollars rehabbing my house. And I get that behind me right now, we got trouble with a multifamily home behind us. Uh we have people cutting through our yards and everything. And I'm pretty sure I'm the only one here, but a lot of the neighbors didn't even know about it because. The sign was put on Wright Street instead of in. Nobody put a sign on Leary Street so the people could be advised. I just came out of my back door one day and saw a sign and I I walked to it, read it, took a picture of it. People don't know about it. I'm pretty sure if you spend five thousand dollars for a home or four thousand dollars, you don't want a multifamily home right behind you because you're gonna have trouble. Right now, it's a peaceful neighborhood, I've been there for over thirty years, almost forty. I rehabbed my house. It's been this year, it was the first year I've been in that house for one year. I don't want trouble in our neighborhood. Got a older people live there. And I'm older myself now. Uh all of a sudden, that land was there, you know why it's been vacant so long? The guy that live in the back of me. That house has been torn down by SWAT. Because the vagrants were going in there to sleep and they make might have caught uh had caught a fire. But. We live peacefully now. You get a multifamily home behind there. The guy, my next door neighbor. We were talking one day and all of a sudden five people come walking right round his yard. It's not a good thing, not there. That land for years, the owner used to dump oil back there, all of a sudden. He was trying to sell it, he couldn't sell it because they say the land wouldn't perk, all of a sudden it perks now. I'm pretty angry about it because it's just not not good. And I'm here to tell you that I object to that.
Had one name signed up, but it is a public hearing if anyone else wishes to speak on this address. See. Uh we entertain a motion? entertain a motion from commissioners.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for the proposed rezoning of the property from M one light industrial to R two.
Second that motion, I second that motion.
Motion is second, any discussion? Ready to vote?
The motion is for approval of the recommendation to rezone the properties from M one light industrial to R two multifamily residential. Uh Mister Crawford?
Aye.
Mister Duan?
Aye.
Mister Monte?
Aye.
Mister Sharp?
Aye.
Mister Bellamy?
Aye.
Right, the motion uh to approve. Approved for two one and this will be forwarded to. Mayor and City Council, the next opportunity for public input. Public Safety Committee of City Council on November twentieth at five thirty. Alright. The next item on the agenda is a proposed rezoning of the property addressed as twenty seven thirty seven Dancler Drive. Charleston County TMS number four eight six zero six zero 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 one six. From R one single family residential to O one O N Neighborhood Office. See the property highlighted here on Dancler Drive, south of University Boulevard. Highlighted in blue, currently the property is a cleared vacant lot. Current zoning of the property is R one single family residential. It's R it's adjacent to R one single family residential to north, to west, to south. Uh there is B one as well as O N Office, uh Neighborhood Office to the east along Dancler. Subject property is designated as suburban residential, which is applied to areas where the city intends to sustain lower density neighborhoods. The principal use of land within these designated areas is low density, single family residential development with a large yards and open space. You see that here is designated in the tan color on the map. Subject parcel is currently a cleared vacant lot, as you can see in the photos. And the area is developed with single family residential uses along with some commercial uses along University Boulevard and Dancler Drive. Staff's recommendation. Is based on uh the future land use designation for this parcel, which is suburban residential, which does not support the requested rezoning. Given the lack of support of the comprehensive plan and the residential character of Dancler Drive, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from R one single family residential. To O N Neighborhood Office.
Commissioners have any questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
She was, she left. Um I don't know if she turned something in, I'm the owner, so I'm not the applicant.
Um maybe who had the note?
Yeah.
Doris? Dorothy Weaver?
Dorothy Weaver, yes.
Alright. It is a public hearing. We have several people signed up to speak. Uh the first one is Lou Baker.
Good evening, thank you, folks. My name's Lou Baker, I live at twenty seven oh four Purnam Drive. I'm also the president of the Civic Association for Deer Park. We agree with your decision for uh. Statement to not approve. Based on the seventy eight overlay. Uh when people are considering coming into Deer Park. They were concerned about all the growth on seventy eight and business coming in. Seventy eight overlay provided it would come in so far and stop, it happens to be right at that property line on that side. That property is also right in a very bad curve. They come in the property and to put it to our o- office neighborhood. One of the things that can be had there is dentist offices, physicians, a lot of extra traffic right on a very bad curve. Creating a very unsafe situation for people going in and out of that property. Also, if it was rezoned again, there also is a buffer required between. It come, you know, business and and that's a twenty five foot buffer that would have to be created. On the property, they're asked to rezone for that as well, okay? But the biggest concern as a civic association is is safety, okay? We have a lady that lives right next door to that property, it's been here for fifty some years, Ms. Mary. Okay, now she has grandchildren and things coming to play. The last thing she needs is all kind of that going on right next door. And also, one of the things that falls under office neighborhood is they could put a photo studio there. With the max structure of three thousand five hundred foot is the max structure on O N property. She doesn't need something like that next to her house with her grandkids and everything. And we're respectfully asking to go with. Do not approve office neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Alicia Dugan?
Hi. Um I was asked at the last minute to speak with my aunt leaving. Um I just came into this, um my mother passed away a couple of years ago and um I'm just gonna read what I got wrote because I'm not good at public speaking, okay? Um I'm the granddaughter of Ellie Meeps, the original owner of this property. My grandmother passed away in two thousand six, it's twenty years ago. That's twenty years, family members have been coming to you and asking for a zoning change. Since then, out of her seven children, we have endured the death of three of her children, including my mother. They will never see their part of their inheritance, it moves on to eight great grandchildren, two daughters and two sons. We are not asking to change anything in this area that isn't already there. There is already an M U S C M U S C help on Dancler Drive that is vis- visible from this property. If you face the property to the left is an all all state agent office on Dancler Drive. As you turn it onto Dancler Drive, there is an East Bay Deli and on the other side of Zaxby's. We ask you tonight, please let this zoning take place, not just because it's time, but because this family has endured enough. Please let us get some closure after twenty years.
Mary Hudson?
You you don't have to ma'am, if you wanna speak from where you are, you're fine.
My name is Mary Hudson and I live at twenty seven sixty three Dancler Drive. On that same same property, right side of the one that she was talking about is thirty seven, twenty seven thirty seven. And I have been there fifty some years and I have stayed there. And we want it to be turned into a rental of a place where we can live like residents. Because when I, when my children come to my house. They are afraid to turn around in their uh my yard because there's a curve right there in the in the street. And when you go by that, their drive, the driveway to twenty seven thirty seven is uh um. It's right there, right there side of my fence line almost. And so, and if you go leave my house, you s- you go out to seventy eight. You go there and you're gonna get, you have to make sure that everybody's around that curve. And my kids even had to get people out of the ditches right over there on that same property that we're speaking about. And because one got in this ditch and constantly people stay in those ditches right there in that area. And so it's a dangerous turn in that street that her property connects on the driveway. So that's what I would like to talk to you about this, that my kids said that one day somebody is gonna get killed in that curve. Because they have to go out that, they don't have to, they can go to another street to go over out. But they need to come in that way if they wanna get closer to my house. And so that's why I am here and I want to say that I wish they would rezone it as it is now to keep it rezoned as to residential. That's the way I feel about it. And my children, I have one daughter that comes to stay with me in the daytime, I have somebody to stay with me. Daytime, not all the time, but some of the time, and at night I stay by myself. So anyway, they uh it's like a freeway through there because they coming off of seventy eight, going back into the back back there. And they're um just um, they don't care how they drive, they go drive like a maniac through there. And so I'm just waiting one day to somebody get killed on that corner because my son had to stop his truck coming around that curve. He blowed his horn to keep from them hitting him head on. Cause he was on my side going out to the street at seventy eight. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
How about Dennis Iskey? Say it again?
Light biscuit with a.
Okay, Iskey, okay, Dennis.
Dennis Iskey, I live at twenty nine eighty seven Edville Ellis Road in Deer Park. And I would like to say that denial is what I'm asking for. And I'm gonna just note the things that Lou Baker said about the overlay. Uh and the dangers of that road. We also have a real issue with uh traffic come through our area. Uh so for those reasons, I ask you to deny.
Thank you. Melanie Rogers?
Regis.
Regis?
James Regis.
Hi, good evening everyone, my name is James Regis, my wife Melanie Regis, uh, we live directly across from the property um, on twenty seven fifty eight Dancler Drive. That, the the picture you guys have up there doesn't really do justice for that curve. That curve is really more almost like a ninety degree angle, so when people come around there too fast, you know, they they lose it. We have pictures of cars, you know, winding up in our di- in our, in our ditch right in front of our house. We've been there for three years and we've had at least four cars end up in our ditch, coming around that bend right there. We've had multiple cars come across on the other side as well, taking out, you know, but we're not here for that, we're, you know, we just wanna make sure that. You know, our eight year old son is right across the street from that property, he plays basketball on the driveway right there, you know. Any type of commercial property that's gonna go there is gonna completely change the aesthetics of the neighborhood, as you can see, it's an, it's a nicely cut. You know, line there where the buffer zone on the east side of her property, that twenty five foot buffer zone we talked about. Is basically a green, you know, treat area and on the the west side and north and south sides are residential, you know, as you can see on the map right there. So, you know, any type of commercial property that's gonna go there is just gonna be an eyesore for the neighborhood and just not gonna fit. The aesthetics of the neighborhood as well, plus it's gonna bring even more, you know, traffic into the neighborhood on that deadly curve. I was just gonna say deadly curve, on that dangerous curve, right, that we just don't need right now. And you know, at some point, and 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 you're showing two streets coming off of Dancler Drive, there's only one street there. So I don't know what that other, you know, Y formation going on to seventy eight, but it's just one street coming on there. And most of the commercial traffic stops well before it gets into the residential neighborhood. We're just talking about some commerce, some traffic that's coming on there at the end, that's, that that can, that can cause issues if they're coming on there too fast. And last thing we want is having another commercial aspect there that's gonna bring in even that much more traffic, it's gonna make it that much more dangerous on that road, right across the street from our house.
I'd just like to repeat what um, the other residents and our neighbors have said. Obviously, there is really a line of demarcation between business and the residential side of that street. And we wanna keep that side residential as it is, uh, the Zaxby's, you know, the M U S C, all of those other businesses, we signed up for that. We understood those were on that side of the street when we uh, uh, you know, bought this property three years ago. But it is a safety issue, again, I have pictures of, you know, cars that we weren't at home at the time, but they came into our ditch. And we can see obviously what happens when cars go too fast around that curb. If it's directly across from our property, then it's going to intrude on uh, again, the culture and the nature of this neighborhood. In keeping that side of it residential and we ask that you continue with the current recommendation, which is a denial.
Edward Myers? Edward Myers? This is the public hearing, if you did not have an opportunity to sign up and you wish to, you can come forward now.
My name is Jamal Mean, I own the property of twenty seven sixty two Dancler Drive, which is adjacent to the property that we're talking about, so.
Give the address one more time Jamal.
Twenty seven sixty two Dancler Drive. I've lived there for about, uh, it's going on five and a half, six years, six years will be in December. Uh, probably once a year, if not twice a year, I have to call nine one one for people ending up in my ditch, as well as my neighbors' ditches. I work weird hours, I used to be a bartender, now I work from four to two at night at a warehouse, so I'm home during the day. Um, I have a dog, I have no children, I'm a single man who lives in that house. Uh, I can't walk my dog out of my neighborhood on that street at night or during the day. Uh, multiple times, cars have come off seventy eight, doing thirty, forty, fifty miles per hour. I've screamed, yelled, I've watched Ms. Mary, my neighbor, almost get hit by cars going mailbox, I myself. I have to walk across the street adjacent to this property to get my mail. Uh, the concern for me is not only for myself, but my neighbors, it is not a safe neighborhood. Uh, I knew that when I bought the house, I knew what I was getting into being a single man moving into that house. It's a very quiet neighborhood other than the traffic. Uh, it takes me sometimes twenty minutes to get home off seventy eight. Sometimes it takes me ten minutes, if I turn left out of my driveway to get to seventy eight. At that, sometimes seven to ten minutes itself, I have to go through, weed myself through the neighborhood. Putting a commercial res- uh, rezoning it, putting commercial there, A to me add to the problem. As well as cause more confusion for people coming off seventy eight in that neighborhood. I, like my neighbors, do not want it there, I don't feel safe as it is, I've requested and asked for speed bumps. I've talked to my neighborhood, it's about that, my neighbors about that, and I just think it's a bad idea to rezone that area.
Could we have anyone else that wishes to speak on this address? Floor is now closed and we will entertain a motion.
Recommendation of denial, I second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I I live in the, uh, I've lived in the neighbor, uh, in the. The Northwoods Estates uh, area out there and for twenty years, and so I drive through the Deer Park area uh, quite often. My son loved Zax- Zaxby's, so um, we go down Dancler quite a bit. That road is um, is interesting, it is a ninety degree turn. Uh, it is very difficult to navigate at the speed that you want, that's even advised uh, to take, there are ditches out there. The entire Deerwood Street is uh, needs, uh, Deerwood Road needs some, some improvements as well, I think they're. Made some strides towards that, but um, it's just a very difficult area, full of homes, single family homes. Um, and that road is really. I don't think it is, would accommodate a business on that road. Very well. I am not one of those speakers. I may have, my, my son may have been at one time, trying to get to Zaxby's, but.
Is there any other discussions?
Alright, the motion on the floor is to recommend denial of the rezoning from R one single family residential to O N neighborhood office. Mr. Crawford?
Aye for denial.
Mr. Duon?
Aye for denial.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp? And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
That is a unanimous vote to recommend denial and. This item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the Public Safety Committee of City Council on November twentieth.
Yes.
Question, is the November twentieth also a public meeting that we have to attend as well to make sure?
You, you can come in and provide public input, you can sign up to to speak one way or the other. Uh, just like this, uh, but instead of planning commission, it will be committee of council. Alright, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending section three two five two. Five four point two, five four point three, five eleven, five twelve, five eighteen, five fourteen, five seventeen, five eighteen, five nineteen, and six thirteen. Of the zoning regulations on the city of North Charleston to define loading zones. Relocate loading zone screening requirements and clarify loading zone orientation, conditional use requirements. The zoning text amendment is proposed to define loading zones and consolidate loading zone screening requirements uh, within the zoning ordinance. This will provide a loading zone standard that is consistent throughout the city and applied equally to all zoning districts. Pretty straightforward, yeah, uh, currently it's slightly um. Unclear and there are multiple ways for it to be applied throughout various districts. Uh, staff's recommendation is to change that, take it out of the individual districts, put it into one central location, so that applies universally.
Uh, so if you guys have questions? But if you have questions, commissioners have any questions for staff? Uh.
No one here to speak.
Oh.
This is still calling.
Will entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll second. Any discussion? Ready for a vote?
Alright, the uh, motion is for approval of the zoning text amendment. Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Duon? Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
And Mr. Bellamy? So this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input and the Safety Committee of City Council on November twentieth. On to section five, which is our plats. We, first one is proposed reapproval of a preliminary plat bearing the title of preliminary subdivision plat, the park at River's Edge. Three, to create lots one through seventy six, open space A and B, private right of way and various easements. So, this preliminary plat was originally approved in March of twenty twenty four and was valid for one year, which has since expired. This preliminary plat combines faces three A, previously approved in October twenty one, and three B, previously approved in October twenty two. Phase three of park at River's Edge, which consists of seventy six townhome lots. The extension of existing Palm Freed Street and a new private right of way called Saw Pit Circle, as well as various easements and two open space parcels totaling approximately thirteen acres. This preliminary plat is in proper order and may be approved at the discretion of the commission, contingent upon the following. Approval of detailed drainage and road plans by the city engineer and availability of water or sewer. Staff's recommendation is contingent reapproval of preliminary plat.
Commissioners have any questions?
So not really much has changed from their original development plans, it's just strictly a renewal of it.
Correct, this is a reapproval of the March twenty twenty fourth. Combined to uh, these three A and three B, which were originally approved separately, they're combined in March. Now they're going to reapprove the uh, apply, so the final plat is also on the agenda. Um, that means they're getting ready to actually establish the property lines, now that construction of the infrastructure is. Been a long time. Any other questions for the? Uh, this is not a public hearing, we'll entertain a motion.
I can make a motion for contingent approval um, of the preliminary plat.
Second the motion.
A motion on the second, any discussion? Discussion, ready for a vote?
The motion is for contingent approval of the preliminary, of the. Reapproval of the preliminary plat, um, Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Duon? Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
And Mr. Bellamy? And that motion carries unanimously. And the master has received contingent approval. Next item on the agenda. Is approval of the final plat bearing the title, final subdivision plat. Park at River's Edge, phase three, to create lots one through seventy six, open space A and B, private right of way and various easements. Um, this is the same property as uh, in the prior item. Final plat proposes to create seventy six townhome lots, the extension of existing Palm Freed Street and new private right of way called Saw Pit Circle, as well as. Various easements and two open space parcels totaling approximately thirteen acres. Final plat is in proper order and may be approved at the discretion of the commission, contingent on the following, council acceptance of the bond. Staff's recommendation is contingent approval of the final plat.
Commissioners have any questions? Entertain a motion?
I can make a motion for contingent approval of the final plat.
Motion. Second.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? And we're ready for a vote?
There's a motion for contingent approval of the final plat of the park at River's Edge, phase three, Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Duon?
Aye.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Aye.
And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries unanimously and the plat has received contingent approval. Next, that is consideration of a preliminary plat titled right of way plat for tract C dot one. At one TMS three nine three zero 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 five zero two, to create new variable with public right of way. And new tract C one A one B and various easements. This preliminary plat proposes to extend the right of way of Blue House Road across Weber Boulevard to the south. And it'll also connect to a proposed extension of Knox Lane with the future phase. The proposed road extension will bisect the parcel, creating two residual tracks to- totaling seven point three three acres. This preliminary plat is in proper order and may be approved at the discretion of the commission, contingent upon the following. Detailed drainage and road plans by the city engineer, staff's recommendation is contingent approval of preliminary plat.
Commissioners have any questions? Entertain a motion?
Like to make a motion for contingent approval of the preliminary plat.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
We are ready for a vote?
So the motion is contingent approval of the preliminary plat for the right of way, um, Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Duon?
Aye.
Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp? And Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously and the plat has received contingent approval. Um, next item on the agenda would be commission member comments. Commission members have comments? Uh, staff comments, um, thank you all, we appreciate your time and uh, the effort that you put in.
I'll heart some ice cream.
Smile, pull up. Turn. Good night.